Okay. Appeals pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedure requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. You know, this is the end of the 2014 one year. I'm going to have this memorized. Okay. No council people here today, I don't think. First of all, I'd like to make a have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Which approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Last month's meeting minutes are approved. First, the consent agenda. Item on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
The items on this month's consent agenda include 1208 Cedar Lane, an addition; 1906 Sweetbrier, also an addition; 1516 Elmwood Avenue, an addition and a detached accessory dwelling unit; 2116 Ashwood Avenue, an addition; 3719 Princeton Avenue, also an addition; 1011 Petway Avenue, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding; and 1514 Elmwood Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. Staff has reviewed these applications, finds that they meet the design guidelines, and recommends their approval.
Okay. Any questions to staff about any of these items on the consent agenda? Okay. Thanks.
I do have a question. Chair.
Okay. Paul, we got one question for you here.
Is there a question?
Yes. Just to help me understand, in 2116 Ashwood Avenue, it looks like it's the setback or the inset. Help me understand that. 2116, let me pull that out. You know how normally there what we review is when you have a differentiation between the existing and the new addition, that there is an inset to that? So, why is this not this in this case? I think this is what I'm looking at. Is it because it's further back?
Looking at this, the addition does go wider, and it's a wide lot. It's more than a 60-foot wide lot, and the house has shifted to the side of the lot. So, in that, that was our review of the addition going wider on this one.
But normally, we would have a differentiation between the two existing and that with a setback. I mean, not a setback, an inset.
The inset.
Mm-hmm. I just hadn't seen anything like that, so that's one question in that.
Is this one you would like to come off the consent agenda?
No, I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Open public hearing. Any of these projects would like to be public would like to discuss more and take off consent agenda? Okay. Sitting now in closed public hearing. Motion.
Move it through.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. The consent agenda does go forth. Okay. Seems like our one to look at is 1801 Woodland Street.
The commission approved a construction of a duplex at 1801 Woodland Street in September this year. The foundation has been constructed, and the applicant would now like to request to alter the plans. Since writing the staff recommendation, we've worked with the applicant and heard from the right-side property owner, so we'd like to amend our recommendation and the description of the request. The applicant is no longer asking for window alterations, and will be using a parch coat for the foundation, so the building is not quite as wide as initially we thought it would be. We are concerned that the framing will extend beyond the walls of the foundation, so want to stress that the house really should be flush, foundation and walls, as shown in the plans. So, the applicant is requesting to increase the width of the house and reduce the right and left setbacks. The left setback was approved to be 10 feet, which meets bulk zoning, and the applicant requests roughly at nine feet. The right setback was approved to be five feet, which meets bulk zoning, and the applicant requests four feet eight inches at its closest point. The width was approved at 35 feet, and the applicant is requesting 35 feet and nine inches. The process of inspections and how the proposal does or does not meet the design guidelines is outlined in detail in your staff recommendation, so I won't repeat all of that here for you today unless you have some questions. Staff would like to, again, slightly revise their recommendation. Therefore, our recommendation is for disapproval, finding that the revised proposal does not meet the design guidelines for rhythm of the street, scale, and setbacks. Staff further recommends that the motion specify that disapproval means the house should be constructed as originally permitted with the flush walls to the foundation. We received about 19 emails in opposition to the project, one of them being from the council member, the neighborhood president, as well as the neighbor to the right. Do you have any questions for me? And the applicant is here. Thank you.
I was reading while you were talking. So, could you repeat the revised staff recommendation? Thank you.
Staff recommends disapproval, finding that the revised proposal does not meet the design guidelines for rhythm of the street, scale, and setbacks. Staff further recommends that the motion specify that disapproval means that the house should be constructed as originally permitted with the walls flush with the foundation walls.
Robin, do we have any revised drawings?
The it's essentially the same as what you originally approved, but the the site plan that you have in your packet is what they're proposing. It gets a little confusing. They didn't take into account the brick, and so there was actually it was actually wider than what you see on your site plan, but since they're going to use the parch coat, it is what you see on your site plan, and.
We got a site figure.
I emailed it to you.
Did we have it over here?
We no. No, I didn't do that.
But you are okay with the paired windows. Does that what I understand?
They've changed all the windows back to what was originally permitted.
Okay.
So, they're no longer asking for changes to the windows.
Okay.
And so, Robin, in our staff report that we have, the staff was recommending approval of the right-side setback, which was eight foot five, is that correct?
That was if the right-side property owner didn't disagree or was in opposition, and she is in opposition.
Okay. I see. All right. So, so the staff is recommending disapproval on both setback determinations and the width, thus the width of the home.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Robin. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address and discuss the project?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Dewayne Cuthbertson. I live at 1010 Ackland Avenue in Nashville. I'm representing the applicant Cathedral Homes for this new construction at 1801 Woodland Street. As Robin stated, we are requesting an alteration to a previously approved plan and a setback determination to allow a shallower setback on the right side, on the back corner only, and then a shallower setback along the 18th Street side. These requests are essentially to utilize an existing foundation, as well as, and it's important to stress, they're requested to utilize a pre-engineered frame that sits on the property today. Robin's kind of outlined some of the history as to how we got here. The applicant originally requested a 38-foot wide house and previous to the September approval, and worked pretty hard with staff to get down to a width and design that was acceptable and ultimately approved by this commission. Through a series of human error, a foundation was poured out on the site at 38 feet wide. When it was caught, the error was corrected. The footings were repoured as they were shifted in on the site to line up with the 35-foot wide house. When the blocks are laid, the blocks were laid nine inches off. And the pre-engineered frame was ordered. When the contractor who constructs the frame does their site visit to make sure with what their building lines up with the foundation, they measure across the brick, the blocks, and they measure 35 feet, nine inches. And so, they proceed to build this frame in a factory off-site and have it delivered to the site. And so, we've gone down the road to have that. We've gone down the road, and we have a foundation that is at 35 feet, nine inches, and a frame that fits a 35-foot, nine-inch house. The applicant chooses to use or likes to use a pre-engineered frame because it's a more sustainable process. It's built off-site. There's less waste. It's more structurally sound. If the applicant was doing a traditional stick-built house, framing it up on-site, I'm not sure that I'd be here in front of you. But to discard a pre-engineered frame is considerable waste. So, we're before you asking for relief to allow this nine-foot increase in the width and small encroachments into both side yards. The applicant acknowledges the mistake. It's not an insignificant mistake. It could be a very costly mistake. He fully understands that. For him, it's what exists, and he's trying to correct it the best ways that he knows possible. Ostensibly, we feel like this will be the same house that was approved by the commission back in September. They have complied with all of staff's requests to provide the right details. They are complying with all of the commission's recommendations that were provided in the September approval, switching the porch, providing the additional gable along the 18th Street, eighth, sorry, 18th Street facade to mitigate the impact of that facade on the 18th Street streetscape, if you will. And so, we feel like we are putting a we are putting a home, a duplex, on this lot that will still contribute to the fabric that makes up the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. Robin went through some of the clarifications. We have worked hard to make sure our plans match up with what was approved by the commission in September. We made sure the windows were right, the details were right, and so that the only requests we are asking are for nine inches in width and setback encroachments on the right and left side. So, I won't go into detail as to the clarifications. We feel like the request is not detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood or the character that comprises the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. This is an older, as I don't have to say it to you, but you know this is an older neighborhood. There's a variety of housing types and layouts, and that's part of the charm that makes this neighborhood. We don't feel like this house with nine additional inches and minor encroachments and street setbacks or the side setback on that backside violates the spirit and the intent of the guidelines that were crafted to make sure that what does what is constructed in this neighborhood contributes. With regard to the setback requests, I'm a little caught off-guard with the opposition from the neighbor to the right. I spent at least 30 minutes in her house on Saturday with her son going over our requested encroachment of four inches on that back corner, and she's elderly, and we had to go over it several times, and every time she appeared to understand, she acknowledged that she didn't have a problem with it. And so, to hear that she has concern with the four inches on that back corner is a little surprising to me. The house on that side of the property, while it will encroach four inches on the back corner, it's actually off the setback line in the front of the house by six inches. The setback request on the street side, we are requesting slightly over a foot of encroachment on Woodland Street, and that's at the corner, then, sorry, the southwest corner of the house. The setback encroachment diminishes as we move back on the lot, and we feel like that that request is not, again, it's well, it's consistent with the pattern found in the surrounding neighborhood. There are a variety of houses that find themselves in different relationships with side streets. Some are built very, very close to the street. Some are five feet off. There are two stories. There are one stories. There's no hard and fast pattern on these side streets. And so, while we're requesting to reduce the zoning requirements setback standard, we feel like our request is consistent with the pattern that is found in this neighborhood. With regard to the width requested, we feel like at 35 feet, nine inches, we are, again, consistent with the spirit and the intent of the guidelines in that 35 feet, nine inches does not break or significantly depart from the pattern found in the immediate vicinity. There are houses on 50-foot lots that are 35 or wider, including one on this block just two lots down. It's considerably wider than 35 feet. There are new houses built on Woodland just a block over that are wider than 35 feet. And so, we feel at 35 feet, nine inches, we're not departing from the intent of what was approved in September at 35 feet, or that we are, again, departing from that pattern that was established as part of the neighborhood. As far as precedent goes, we don't feel like we're setting a precedent. We don't feel like we are extending beyond the basic parameters that set up these guidelines for the neighborhood. We're not setting a new standard, and I believe this commission, I believe that precedent is a tricky thing. I mean, most commissions, including yourselves, you look at sites on a case-by-case scenario. Each site is unique in its own context, and so we don't feel like this house with nine additional inches sets the bar for any new development or additions that might happen in the future in this neighborhood. We're willing, my applicant is definitely willing to work with the applicant, I'm sorry, with the commission, with the staff, to tweak design details, to mitigate impacts that the neighborhood neighbors might feel this nine inches creates. We're certainly willing to work on landscaping, fencing, anything that might mitigate the impact that this nine additional inches and the minor encroachment to the street yard might create. But, you know, we find ourselves before you appealing for relief to overcome, again, not an insignificant mistake, but relief that would enable us to avoid considerable waste and delay in constructing a house that we feel will contribute to the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. So, I'll stop there and be available for any questions that you might have related to the site and this house.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Can I just make sure? I don't have a site plan. That's my problem. I want to be sure I understand this. So, the house was approved to be 35 feet wide, and it is now 35 foot, nine inches wide?
Yes, sir. It was approved.
The right setback was five foot. Now, it's five, now it's four foot, four inches?
It's with the brick veneer, it was proposed at four foot four. The brick veneer is gone, and it's now a parch coating. And so, the back, the back right corner is, we're requesting four feet, eight inches.
Four feet, eight inches. Okay.
At that back corner. Yes, sir.
And then on the left property, you've got, it was 10 feet. Now, it's eight foot five?
With the brick veneer, it was eight foot five. So, now, we're requesting eight foot nine, so that the walls.
Eight foot nine versus 10 feet?
Versus 10 feet. Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
One second. Any more for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to open public hearing. Why don't the people who would like to speak in opposition, please come first, state your name and address, and they're, like we had said in the beginning, it's two minutes each, and I believe Sean is back to help you stay on time for that. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Smith. I live at 1800 Russell Street, and I'm president of Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association. And our neighborhood association opposes allowing this forgiveness in this particular incident. First of all, this property, there's a foundation that has been constructed. There is plenty of material on-site, and until yesterday morning, there was no permit pulled for this construction at all. So, the process is really important, and the process that you all go through to determine what is acceptable and what is not is very important, and this particular developer has violated that process on two different levels, both in not following the guidelines that you first laid out and by not obtaining a permit to construct this house prior to starting construction. I think it's an egregious offense by an experienced builder who knows better than to make this kind of mistake and then come in and ask you to forgive that mistake because of waste. From what I understand, the materials that are on-site, although they have been constructed for this particular property, could be reused in other places and could actually be reconfigured to work with the correct plans on this house if if the builder really wants to work with the commission here. I think that there have been some other incidents by Cathedral Homes that suggest that they are not interested in helping us maintain the charm of our neighborhood. We worked really hard the last year to extend our overlay, and when we made the public announcement that we were extending the overlay in the 17th area side of our neighborhood, this builder immediately purchased a contributing historic home, demolished it, and replaced it with one that was not is not a contributing structure and does not fit our overlay, our conservation overlay guidelines. So, I think that habit of not being interested in following the guidelines is continuing, and it really offends me for you that he would fail to follow what you said was appropriate and then come back and ask you, well, you know, it's a mistake. We're sorry, but we don't want to waste the materials that we've already purchased. So, as a neighborhood, we would urge you to stand steadfast in what you said to begin with and require that the Cathedral Homes build the property at 1801 as originally approved. Also brought with me, and I gave to Robin a notarized letter from the right-side neighbor expressing our opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I've been up here a lot since 1979, both on this side and that side. I'm Carol Norton, Historic Edgefield, 801 Boscoble Street. I'm here to lend my voice to our neighboring historic district, Lachlan Springs. And first, I want to thank staff for having worked with the applicant and made the original recommendations to bring that project into compliance with the Lachlan Springs East End guidelines. And I also want to thank you for recognizing those recommendations and having voted on it in September. So, why, why all of this fuss? Well, the fuss is because the applicant disregarded what you said. He disregarded the process for building in this city. He did not get a permit to build a foundation and built a foundation incorrectly, and it is to the credit of staff for having recognized that and having called it to the attention, and they tried to correct it but didn't quite get there. As the previous speaker said, this applicant has a habit of disregarding both codes and historic guidelines in Edgefield, in East End, in Lachlan Springs. What I'm hoping you do is to send the message that this is the line in the sand. Do it the right way or quit doing it here. The applicant is a state-licensed general contractor. He knows better than to put in a foundation without a permit. He knows better than to preorder engineered roof members before the permit has gone through the process. So, all of this, as far as I'm concerned, is a smokescreen. Why would he not?
That's time.
I just urge you to continue the integrity of the Historic Zoning Commission in maintaining the historic guidelines for Lachlan Springs East End.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue in the Eastwood neighborhood, just north of this one. I happened to be present on another matter when this item was discussed before the commission in September, I believe it was, and I was actually one of the folks that spoke in favor of this particular design, I think, for a duplex design that is not symmetrical. There are a lot of things that I thought were creative about this design that I liked. Some of the neighbors nearby had some concerns about the rear amassing of this building, and some of those neighbors are here today. And some of the commissioners, some of you yourselves, had some ideas for how to improve the structure, and there was quite a bit of deliberation on this one to get it right. And I think that a lot of effort went into that, both from the community members and the commissioners to tweak this design to get it right for this corner. And I feel it's unfortunate that, under the circumstances of construction, that that plan, which we worked really hard to get right, is not actually going to be implemented if the applicant is successful in this particular case. I would also like to review what has happened in other cases that I've seen this year. There was an example in the Salem Town neighborhood in which a builder put on siding that did not meet the design guidelines, and the decision of the commission at that time was that the siding is a very clear item in a building permit, and that those who are building in Davidson County need to be able to read building permits, and the commission decided to require the applicant to remove that siding and start over. There was another application in Salem Town in which an individual pulled a self-permit to put a dormer on the front of a building that was contributing, and the commission decided to require that person to remove that dormer. So, I think you have a strong record of requiring applicants to go back to their to subcontractors in the event that building permits are not followed. And just wanted to reiterate that. I hope that the commission stands by your original decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Ethee. I live at 1804 Woodland, across the street from the property we're talking about. I'm a former Neighborhood Association president, and I stand with our current one, with Carol Norton, with our historic commission in disapproving of the, again, requested changes to this house. I keep wondering, they asked for 38. It's approved at 35. The drawing that was on the website currently said 36.5, and I keep thinking, what about 35 feet is is hard to understand. And I just, I feel, as as Mrs. Norton said, that we don't really have the applicant's trust, and so I disapprove it. We've lived there since 2000. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Matthew Stitzlein. I live at 1716 Forest Avenue, and actually, I've been involved in this process from the get-go, I guess. I did speak against the design initially at the September meeting. I also wanted to note a bit of a technicality that, and you may recall, that the applicant actually withdrew that request for a variance at that time and had volunteered to meet the 35-foot width guideline. So, you actually didn't even have to rule on that issue. I do have a petition here from immediate neighbors. Just in the last couple of days, we were scrambling, but managed to get nearly 50 signatures. Yeah, so, the way this unfolded is, once they demolished the house, if I could give you a bit of a timeline, I was back and forth quite a bit with Fred Zahn, and I don't know what information he was able to pass on to you, but essentially, they poured footings on October 23rd, and I notified him on the 24th that they looked terribly close to the neighbor's fence line. neighbor's fence line. And he went out on the 24th, Friday the 24th, measured the footings, and they were sized for a 38-foot wide structure. He notified them about that and also requested that they have the surveyor come back out and mark the property lines, as the property lines hadn't been flagged or pins hadn't been painted or anything to that effect. About two weeks passed, I called back to follow up to see what was going on, and they showed up two weeks later on a Friday to dig the new footings, poured them the following Monday, and then by the following Saturday, a team of masons came out and laid this foundation. You know, I tried to act quickly at the outset. So, I guess basically, they poured the footings on a Thursday, and blocks started showing up on Friday, so I wanted to make sure that Historic was aware so that they weren't laying a foundation that was too wide and then they would have to waste that material. You know, I wanted to cut them off at the pass before they were already wasting materials down the line. Basically, they volunteered to make it 35 feet wide. They started out 38 feet wide. They were notified. They had the opportunity to make it 35 feet wide again, then they came out and laid a foundation that was going to finish at a foot and a half too wide, essentially. Had the brick veneer gone on, it would finish at 36.5. As far as it being skewed and encroaching on the neighbor's property line, I'd also like to note that the updated survey is dated November 21st. I did not actually see any flags or stakes or anything out there until the last week and a half or two weeks. So, make of that what you will.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your working with Historical.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Krailing. I come here as an officer of Rediscover East, also a resident of East End, 1201 Holly Street, to suggest to the Commissioners that it's not the business of the commission to give contractors mulligans. If they make mistakes, they should be held responsible for those mistakes financially and otherwise. I also want to suggest, too, that the offer of the contractor to replace the brick veneer foundation with slurry is a change in materials and a change in the aspect of the house, which will, in fact, impact the historical character of the neighborhood and the visual nature of the houses. We lose historical character of neighborhoods like East Nashville by a thousand small cuts. And replacing the brick veneer here with slurry is one of those small cuts, and I hope the commission will take that into account, too, when you make your deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Sean Kies. I live at 1800 Forest Avenue. I'm the neighbor directly behind this house. I would like to put my opposition to this, to this construction going on. I know the house that it is replacing was not a contributing structure, but the house that is currently being built does not go with plans that were submitted to the council and have not been approved, have been built without a building permit, was gone on so long. We can look around at the other houses they have built and see examples of their construction ethics, whether it's lack of vapor barriers and things that they've put in, whether it's leaving gouges in newly resurfaced asphalt roads in there, whether it's gouges from bobcats in my own backyard from their construction habits. So, I'd like to counsel to look and consider at not allowing this to come in. As we come in and we see that this house was submitted, I believe, as a story and a half, yet the back of the house clearly looks at, clearly shows a two-story structure as opposed to a story and a half. And so, once again, I'd just like to put my opposition to this and show that myself and my fellow neighbors are up here saying that we would like, you know, we're not here to try and stop houses being built at all, but the people who are building houses outside of codes are not the ones that are going to be living with this and seeing it and dealing with it every day. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Borzak, resident of Lachlan Springs for 29 years, 1503 Woodland Street. I'm also in opposition to this primarily because of what's already been stated. This person has shown a total disregard consistently over the guidelines, and I think he's trying to do that once again. The waste can be taken care of. Granted, it's going to take some work on his part, but I worked as a volunteer at Habitat for nine years, and we've learned how to reconstruct structured framing in hours to be able to stay on schedule on the build there. So, it's not an impossible task, and we're talking about volunteer forces being able to do this. So, an experienced contractor should be able to do this, as he should, because he's out of specification. Also, we need to keep in mind, even though it doesn't pertain to this house, he's got 15 other properties in the immediate neighborhood. And if we keep giving in on this guy, on these type of things, there's no reason to think he won't try it again. And this taxes the commission or the staff to come out there all the time checking to see if he's using his measuring tape properly. And it's just, he doesn't care, and he's shown that. And I think it's about time we drew a line, and the line in sand has already been stated that this is no longer acceptable, and we won't let this go, and we shouldn't. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Polk. I live at 1815 Holly Street and have been there since the late '70s. I wanted to say to you today, we appreciate very much all your time, energy, and effort to create a stable historic zone, historic conservation area in East Nashville and in Lachlan Springs. We know you've put tremendous effort, and your staff has put tremendous effort into creating these guidelines and creating the framework in which we can have a good, solid historic area. And that is no small thing. That is a huge gift and a huge contribution to life, quality of life in this city. Just want to encourage you to stand by that, having created it. Hold together what you have worked hard to create. Stand with us in protecting the quality of life and the design of our neighborhood. Thank you, if you will.
Thank you. Okay, if there are not any others in opposition, are there people who would like to speak for this particular project? If you'd come forward and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, the applicant is also, is able to have a two-minute rebuttal if you would like to.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's obvious, mistakes have been made on this site. The applicant only recently discovered that contractors were moving forward without a building permit. They obtained a demolition permit. They'd obtained permission from Historic to proceed with the 35-foot house, and contractors were just going. The applicant's discovered it. He is working hard to rectify that, get the proper permits in place. The commission approved a house that they felt would contribute to the character of Lachlan Springs neighborhood. Again, based on human error, the framing system is there to fit a 35-foot and 9-inch house. Ostensibly, we are asking to put in the same house that this commission approved back in September with a 9-inch difference. We feel like 9 inches, it will still meet the spirit and the intent of the Lachlan Springs neighborhood and the guidelines that are set up to enforce it. We submit to you that the setback variations that we're requesting are consistent with those that are found throughout the neighborhood, on corner lots, on interior lots, again, on just about every block in this neighborhood. While the plan in front of you is slightly different from the one that was approved in September, we feel like, on its face, it is still consistent with the character that's existing in the neighborhood, and we feel like with nine additional inches, it would still meet the intent and the spirit that was behind the commission's approval back in September. That's all I have to add.
If you would, please, sir, help me understand something.
Yes, sir.
The applicant?
Yes, sir.
Is not the contractor?
The applicant is the general contractor, yes, sir.
Okay. And he had an approved set of plans as of last September?
As of September, yes, sir.
Okay. And its subs were out there working, and they were not working with the approved set of plans?
The initial footer was dug with a 30...
Were they just doing it on the fly with no plans?
No, sir. No, sir.
Then how did it get so long?
They were doing it with a 35-foot wide plan.
Then how did we get here? I don't get it.
When the footers were adjusted, the block was laid, and it shifted 9 inches. And...
But how so?
I can't, I can't, I can't address technical issues. I don't know how we got off 9 inches, but we are, we're there at this point. And so, we're before the board, just appealing for relief to allow us to use the existing framing system to build a house that we feel like is consistent with the spirit and the intent behind the original approval.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
How much of the building is built?
It's, at this point, it's only the foundation and the blocks. The framing system is sitting on the lot as we speak. That was constructed in the factory, so that's where we're at. There's an image in your staff report that shows essentially existing conditions on the property.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Closed public hearing. Discussion.
I have a question for staff. What, do you know what the side setback of the adjacent property is?
The one to the right or to the left?
We're on a corner, right. So, well, sorry, yeah, the one directly adjacent, I guess, to the right facing the house.
No, I'm sorry, I don't know. But we did find that the 10-foot to the left was appropriate because that's what you have across the street with that house. So, that was the context we were following for that 10 feet.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I'll say that I think, on the surface, 9 inches is fairly insignificant, so you need to think about whether it's material here and the factors that go into whether it's material. And there are, I think there's a lot of factors, because this one little 9 inches, or I guess it's kind of 14 inches, because the house is sitting crooked into setbacks differently, but the brick is going to be removed, which I think is important and not a good aesthetic move, and replaced with some sort of slurry that I think is significantly less attractive. They poured the footings. It was wrong. They redid it. It was wrong again. It's just hard to imagine how that can keep happening, and engineered framing is not, it doesn't have rebar in the core. You can adjust it. It's wood. And the fact that they didn't have a permit is just baffling. I just think it's a comedy of errors that does make it material, and the details do matter, and the fact that so many neighbors and other folks in the area are here and it matters to them, I think also makes it, should make it material to us, that people are looking to us to interpret these guidelines, and they are vague. But I think taking all those circumstances together, it seems material to me when you look at it in a picture, whereas I think in the vast majority of instances, not that we've had many of them, but that 9 inches just is 9 inches. But I don't know that that's the case here.
I do have one more question, sorry, for staff. Typically, five-feet side setback from an adjacent property is standard, what we've approved in the past.
It really depends on the historic context. That is the bulk standard. But we also look at that rhythm of the street in determining what the appropriate width and spacing between buildings should be. For this one, you know, as you may remember, back in September, that was our recommendation to hold that bulk standard of 5 feet on the right and the 10 on the left, because that did meet the historic context.
And you feel like this does not?
It doesn't, and it goes a little bit beyond that. I, you know, I think if this were coming to us before construction, we might be having a different conversation. But we typically have, you know, three to five cases a month where someone has built something not to plans, and that we have to work with them to get them to start over, take it apart and start over. So, we worry that that will send a message to everybody, just build what you want and come ask the commission for it. So, it's a process issue to us as much as it is meeting the design guidelines it's about.
I think, I can fully agree with all the emotions around this, and, you know, we heard a lot about sort of vindication for past, you know, past actions, past homes that were built, construction practices and habits, you know, not having a building permit and other things like that. But I think it's really important that this commission understand that those aren't really our, you know, there's other agencies, other processes that deal with those issues. So, what's really important here is to determine whether or not the applicant with their application meets the guidelines. And that's why I think, you know, I ask the question about the adjacent homes and, of course, and what we approved in the past, and the adjacent sidelines, I mean, the adjacent setbacks. So, you know, I, so we have to ask our question, you know, the question, and, you know, if this came before us for the first time, regardless of all the mistakes and, you know, not getting a permit and all of that, would we have approved it? And I think what I just heard Robin say is that 5 feet is pretty typical on adjacent lots. It's what the bulk standard is. 10 feet across the street is the setback. And then, so, while it's a matter of inches, I would suggest that, based on the language and the guidelines, that the staff recommendation is appropriate, and I would move that we approve staff recommendation.
Okay, moving staff recommendation for the disapproval.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second.
Well, can you clarify, Hunter, that they actually made a recommendation that the right setback would be okay if the right-side property owner does not oppose the encroachment. So, can you just clarify that a little bit?
We actually revised our recommendation because the right-side property owner is opposed.
So, it's all, yes, it's all opposition. The whole thing is disapproved?
Well, as stated in our, in the first submittal, I mean, today, in our evaluation that we received. Okay. All right.
Okay, is everybody clear? Okay, so we don't need to change that? We have a second? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion carries disapproval. Let's see. So, we're rules of order?
Next, yes. Next is rules of order and procedure, and Legal and I have had a chance to talk it over, and she had some recommendations, fairly minor, just a word here and there, but I'd still like to wait and bring this to you with those corrections so you really understand exactly what it is you're approving. But it is on the agenda, so we can discuss it if you'd like, but I'd rather we vote on it next month, if that's all right.
Okay, so we'll... So, we'll table it for 2015?
Yes. Unless there's anything you wanted to talk about now, because we may not have as much time next month.
Let's just do it all at the same. Don't you guys agree that let's do it all? I mean, just do it all at the same time.
If it's all right, I did have one more question for you, not on the agenda, but it's not a voting item. It's not an action item. It's the electronic packets. I had sent you an email asking about if that was something that interested you or not. It would certainly save us a lot of money and be greener and all of that. would certainly save us a lot of money and be greener and all of that, but I only heard back from three people. So if we could, maybe we could just take a little moment to discuss whether that's doable, possible. I think at some point, we might actually
Be forced to.
be forced to do it, but not yet. But I just wanted to get an idea.
What if we just, real quickly, just go around, that would be easiest.
I need to be forced to do it.
I think I'm the same with him, although I do see the projects online, and then I just sort of short-form it. But it is good to see it in full form. I do have an iPad, but technicality of that, I need some IT assistance to download.
Paper is easier, but I just got to get used to looking at it.
Yeah. But I would, I would go for paperless if we could, if there would be a really easy way to download it, instead of Dropbox-ing it and then putting it onto your iPad. Maybe IT can help us out with that.
I'm afraid that Dropbox is, or, you know, something like a Dropbox is the only way for us to transmit it to you. You can always pull it online, but then you've got to download each one individually. With a Dropbox, you can just grab them all at once.
What about just several PDFs?
It's too large, yeah. It's, the PDF starts to break down if we get that many pages attached.
I got it downloaded off the website, and the plans are on there. They're just, the page is just verbiage. You don't get something?
No, that's a mistake on our end. If you see something like that, please let us know. That's a mistake that's been made. The plan should be there.
Is there any way to get, just to have the plans, like here, when we meet and everything else?
We could, but then we might as well just go ahead and print them and send them
What do you think, Hunter?
I'd do better, like, plans are on paper. I don't mind, like, a laptop for verbiage. I don't know if that's complicated.
I find myself flipping back to the plans, and it's easy for me to flip through the verbiage, but sometimes the plans are a little bit bigger.
I prefer the paper. I like to make notes and circle and scratch and sketch, and I'm happy to be in the last century.
I have grown to do everything on my electronically now, so-
You can teach all of us.
Yeah, it's just, I have to, I end up walking out, almost leaving this, so I'm for the, for the electronic. Just a couple people hadn't said. It looks like you're about three-quarters of the way through it.
Well, and I'm with you all, I find myself using paper inconveniently. It's just a method of teaching myself how to do it. And I work with plans all the time at work, but I end up printing them out, so.
Is there software that it could be uploaded into that is almost, that you could, you can click and you can type in a note on it, or pick a pencil and write on and save it on that, like you could save your notes into it? I'm sure that exists, right?
Dropbox can work that way. They're PDFs, so you can make adjectives to PDFs. And I'm wondering if the, for those of you who like paper, which I completely understand, we certainly print them out when we're dealing with them. If it works to receive it electronically, and then if there are specific ones that you know you want to ask questions about, or you have concerns about, that you could just print those pages yourselves, if you're interested in it, or, you know, does that help any at all, or?
The problem is, like you said, while we're deliberating, we're all flipping back and forth. So as long as we have the plans here, we're going to be asking these guys to flip back and forth through their presentation.
And that's fine. We certainly don't mind doing that. It's just that it's real-
It's time concern.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. It's hard to read plans on the screen. When they're a PDF that's been shrunk down to a PowerPoint, you can't see the details, you can't see the notes, you can't see all the details of it.
What would you guys say if we tried a couple of beta months, just tried it, like maybe February, and we see, you know, we try, maybe you bring a, sneak a couple extras that we don't know about. And we just give it a shot, and if it, if it works well, or we think it's just too clunky, then we ask, we say, you know, just go back to it, or, and we just, we try it and see if we can transition. And I just always also have, you know, my green thumb comes out when I take this big stack and-
I know, it's heartbreaking.
Yeah. One thing, though, you know, when we get these packets every month, I sit down with mine, and I don't want to say skim, I'll say I skim through them slowly. But I really get into them when we sit down here. Now, if I get an email, then, and I'm busy, it's highly likely I'm going to pass that email by. It's just a bad habit of mine. And then, then I, on one wish, I go, oh, I got a meeting today. And then I haven't reviewed the material. So the fact that it lands on my desk, it stays in my face.
Well, let's just try one month of it, and just to see how it goes, and if it doesn't, if it's just a total, we don't know what's going on, then we just may have to go back.
I do print out the ones that you all have disapproved, and look more closely at those than I do the consent items.
So when you say try, do you want me to only send it to you electronically, or do you want to, want it both ways?
I think you have to only do it, or we'll still do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Just rip the Band-Aid off.
Yeah, you either have to do it, and then if it's, if it's clunky, if it just doesn't work, if the 19th century-
And then when you get new commission members, you just have to make sure that they're technically savvy, so they can help you.
Yeah, they have to be young. Now, I feel so mollified to hear some of y'all say that you're on paper, you'd like the whole copy, because I most assuredly do. I guarantee I do. I'm willing to try, because I hear her saying that they're going to probably end up doing this sometime anyway. We're going to have to be required. I'll print mine out, in the meantime.
Hunter, can you, can the staff have the plans and stuff for the consent agenda items as well, just as backup, if we start going electronic, and we hadn't looked at them, just to maybe have that, just to look if there are questions?
Sure, we'll print out several copies and bring them with us.
Robin, do you think there will be a time where there will be in the budget that there would be iPads provided for the commissioners?
And that was something the director and I had talked about.
It is Christmas.
Since we, since we-
It could be reused.
-haven't been getting any for staff, I don't foresee that at any time in the near future.
So much for Christmas.
Well, if there's no other, I want to thank all the commissioners. This year, we've had a lot of late nights. It's only befitting that this December meeting would have a short time to it. But, yeah, so we appreciate the Christmas gift from staff, that this would go early. But we, I know we've worked really hard, and this has been a really trying year, but we've got through it well. And I appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody, you know, everybody except for Ben showing up today, so that's really good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn. Motion? Good? All good? Adjourn.